All right, the hour of 7:30 has arrived. I'd like to call to order this business meeting of Abana, of Abana School District 116. Roll call, please.
Number Hassan Adkin.
Here.
Number Ogowski.
Here.
Number Ward.
Here.
Number Hall.
Here.
Number Carter is here, Vice President Axum.
Here.
And President Palasty.
Here, thank you. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? There is no call for an executive session after tonight's meeting. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, commendations and recognitions. Word of education will recognize former member and president, John Dimmitt, for his service. Oh wait, I blew past citizens, I blew past citizen statements. Sorry, let's go back to citizen statements. See, see what happens when a rookie takes over, John. We only have one citizen statement tonight, and that's Taryn Nance, our high school principal.
Am I clear? All right, good evening, everyone. So I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Brian Ogowski last week. He came to Abana High School for a tour and meet a new principal and, you know, see how our school was going. We talked about energy and, you know, just, you know, the environment and atmosphere, but we also rose to the subject of our SRO and Mr. Chad Burnett. And so we talked a little bit about that, and I realized that I hadn't officially or publicly made a statement on my stance when it comes to our SRO and what I believe and to be true about where he stands and how I feel about it. So I wanted to address the board tonight, just to give you my clear stance on where I, where I feel our SRO program is and where we should be going in the future. So I have a statement I prepared. I've worked alongside four different SROs at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, and each experience has been positive, rewarding, and eye-opening with regards to the relationship building that has taken place between the SRO and students, SROs and staff, and SROs and the positive school environment. Officer Burnett is an integral part of our social emotional learning framework because he is a member of the Abana Nation, and the entire school community has embraced his presence. As a young black high school principal, I can readily express my personal and professional frustrations and negative emotions regarding the structural and systemic issues that have impacted community police relations at the local, state, and federal levels. However, stepping outside of that perspective while speaking as an educator, I've enjoyed my work in relationships with each SRO I've worked alongside, Officer Burnett included. He exemplifies the type of policing that I would like to see every police officer have. He enters every situation with a calm demeanor, presence, and solid command that provides a feeling of safety and security without the use of force. He communicates regularly with all members of our administrative team, central office, and our students services support team. He attends weekly meetings, provides sound advice from law enforcement perspectives, but more importantly, understands the work needed to be done within a public school institution. He understands the balance of power, authority, and flexibility needed to ensure that our responses are firm, justifiable, but more importantly, appropriate for our student body. I would estimate that more than half of our student body doesn't pay much attention to Officer Burnett, but that's the great thing about him. He does engage in positive interactions with our students, but maintains a solid presence, which speaks to prevention and not punishment. The student body at large understands why his presence is needed, especially in today's time. I haven't heard one student speak negatively about their interaction with Officer Burnett, even after we've had to manage negative student behavior. As the high school principal for the Abana Nation, I've made a commitment to hearing and listening to student voices. Thus, I am always in communication with our students daily. Officer Burnett's name is rarely mentioned when I ask students to voice their opinions regarding ways to increase our school's safety, security, and positive environment. Again, this just speaks to the solid presence Officer Burnett maintains. During each investigation that UHS administration conducts regarding student involved incidents, Officer Burnett has offered his analysis and expertise where appropriate. When a student returns to the building for receiving an administrative out-of-school consequence, Officer Burnett continues to maintain positive energy, never harboring past incidents in the present. As a black man, I can readily attest to the local, state, and federal conversations regarding the presence of law enforcement in our public schools. Officer Burnett and the other SROs who conduct themselves in a manner in which provides the presence of prevention while coloring our environment with shades of positivity needs to be recognized and praised, especially in today's political climate. All of the pressures and stresses he faces today, each day, is never shown in our school day. He rarely mentions any other political discourse surrounding his position, and all he knows. He simply parks his car in the last parking spot in our lot, walks into our building, and does everything in his power to keep our student body and staff safe from those who seek to do out harm to themselves and others. In my opinion, he's the definition of what a school resource officer should be, and he and the other SROs I work for, Officer Clint Borley, Officer Steve Twilley, and Officer Mark Smollett should be praised. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Nance. Are there any other citizen statements tonight? All right, are you hearing none? Sorry, John. Like the opportunity to, I told myself I wouldn't prepare something tonight, like I couldn't do it justice, but, you know, when I came onto this board, gosh, 11 years ago nearly, I'm not, felt it was kind of an adversarial relationship with you because of what I heard in the public and the groups I was, I was associated with out in the community, which on a single issue had a disagreement with you. But over the course of the past 11 years, the biggest takeaway I've taken from my interactions with you is how to disagree agreeably. I, we've been on opposite sides, on the same side, but on opposite sides of issues several times over the past decade, and we've never walked away in an argument we couldn't smooth over. And we came away respecting one another for their, for their stance and how hard they fought. So I want to thank you for, for teaching me how to be a, be a better board member, and I certainly hope that I can be as fair as you have been in this chair. So thank you so much, John. Anybody else wish to address?
I'd like to, if I could. Paul kind of stated the same thing about being in the board, in the chair seat, which I, John, you made it look so easy. You just, you were born to it, and when it was my turn to step in there, I realized, wow, I've really got to up my game because things that came naturally to you, just not even just procedural stuff, but just, you know, how to ask the right questions at the right times. More importantly, let other people ask the right questions at the right times. I, the five years that I've served with you, you have been nothing but the best mentor. I think professionally, I've probably had since my first high school job when I was 16. All the years in between, I learned from you. I remember when I first joined and I was terrified, I was a deer in headlights and was overwhelmed. And I remember asking you, what should I do? Got all these votes coming up and all this stuff I have to learn, what should I do? And you said, it's going to be okay, just sit back and listen. And if all you can manage to do is listen, you're going to be fine. It's going to be a lot, and you'll be okay. And I've taken that because listening is probably the hardest part of this job because of all the differing opinions that people have, and everybody comes to their opinions honestly for what they want for the kids. And so I've tried really hard to do that when I formed my own opinions, but you also taught me that my own opinion is valuable too. Even if I was a junior member of this board, my opinion counted and who I represented counted. And so I tried to keep that in mind as well. I'm going to miss you, I'm going to miss working with you. The one thing I think that you, you did better than anybody else I've met was being able to let go of things in a way that you don't take things personally. We have a vote, it may be a contentious vote, and we may have lots of discussions with people in the community and with each other that we are really at loggerheads about. And once that vote's taken and the board has spoken, you're on to the next thing. And you don't let it drag you down, and you don't dwell on it. Or at least if you did, you never let any of us know because you knew that there was other important business to take care of, and we couldn't afford to dwell on anything that had bad, bad feelings associated. And I think that's always enabled us to move forward to the next issue and try and be collegial about it. So it's a rare trait that people have, and I don't know how you learned it, but you've got it in spades, and I hope that we can all emulate that. So I think my thanks to you is, I don't know if this is a Boy Scout rule, but I always heard about the campsite rule, which is leaving that campsite in a better position and a cleaner spot than when you first encountered it. And I think that I can say without doubt that you've left the district in a better place than when you first, many years before I was here, joined it. And also, I think you've left our board in a better place because we've learned so many things from you and we've seen how Pro does it. And so for that, I'm grateful, and thank you.
I would just like to say thank you, John. When I came on, I was like Anne kind of astounded by everything. I was the mom, I was like, oh my gosh, what have I gotten myself into? But you helped me a lot, so thank you.
I'm just going to say a couple of quick things. I never had a chance to work with you, obviously, because I am the new you. But I appreciate all the service that you've given to our sub-district. You certainly dealt with more than your fair share of emails from me, my wife, and other people in our district. And whether we agreed or disagreed on issues, you always were very measured in your response, took things back to the board. So thank you for a lot of years representing the people of a very unique and interesting sub-district.
And I've previously spoke before quite a bit and with some of the same sentiments as, as Paul. So I won't speak again other than to just say congratulations. And I would say go off and have fun and do fun things, but I know you've already been doing those things. I'm sure that, you know, I'll continue to run into you at the high school as you work with some of those high school students and work on trips and all of that good stuff. And thanks for everything. Really, you were a pleasure to work with, even though I came in with a mindset that maybe it wasn't going to work between us. Like I said before, you know, as an adult, we have to have that open mind and we have to give people chances to show who they really are. And in, in doing that, I really was able to meet a very beautiful spirit. And I just appreciate that about you, and thank you for everything, and good luck. We'll, we'll see you getting ready for committee work. Don't think you're done.
We want you in the property committee. Anybody else want to address? Thank you.
No, I'm not a board member, so technically I'm, but I'm going to still publicly thank you, John. I want to echo what Anne said. We just appreciate your leadership. As a prior superintendent, you know, just working under you in other ways, as a parent, as a community person, we're kind of almost neighbors. And I've learned so much from you. I just appreciate, appreciate the advice, the coaching, the mentorship. You have left this district in a much better place than we found it 34 years ago. I would agree to that. I'm looking forward to still being able to tap into your wisdom as we go into other conversations and our property conversations. You're still a fixture at Games. I've been kind of mothering him a little bit and saying, why are you out here? And you, for two hours. But I'm, I'm just glad to be able to see you still be able to do that. So I'm really excited about the band expansion. I know you're going to be right there along the way with the band boosters with that and soccer and just all the other things that bring you so much joy. So it'll bring a lot of us joy to still be able to see you in that way. So just thank you, and we appreciate you.
As a small token of our esteem, we have a couple of items for you. Oh, please, please, John, let me, let me give these to you and then give you a chance to speak. But there's a, I withdraw all sentence for having a gavel, so here's, here's a gavel. And,
I'm glad I don't have to bang it anymore.
And in here, just a small little tiger statue that will work out.
You're always a member of Abana High School.
Always, always.
I talked for nine minutes the other night, so I'm not going to talk long tonight either. But, you know, I'm humbled, and it was a great ride. It was a great amount of fun, and I'm still learning. Anne has got the face mask on that I should have on tonight, which is from the class of 2021 because I feel like I finally graduated from Abana High School. So thank you very much. Can you tell I'm smiling?
Thank you, John. So our first administrative report tonight is on Youth Assessment Center supports and the renewal of the agreement.
Okay, and Linda Givens is going to, our Director of Grant-Based Programs, is going to kind of come up to the table. Lori Britt, one of our presenters from the Youth Assessment Center, is joining us via Zoom. So I'll give John a chance to get her in and pull their PowerPoint up. In light of a lot of the conversations we've been having around safety, the violence and some of the actions that are happening in our community that are, are on everyone's minds, we thought this would be a great opportunity to bring the youth, the work of the Youth Assessment Center forward. We typically always have an agreement. We, it was time to renew the agreement anyway. And so instead of just bringing the agreement forward for a discussion about the, you know, the, the language and all those roles and responsibilities, we thought it might be great for our new board members who may not be aware of some of the work that happens at the Youth Assessment Center and how it impacts our students at the secondary level. We thought this would be a good opportunity to have you learn more about the programming. So she's already been over to the high school and visited with Mr. Nance. And tonight, she's going to share a little bit about the program with Linda. Is it on? I think so, okay. So tonight, I'm going to just talk briefly. I hope that Lori can join me, but at this point, she's not here yet. But I can talk for her too until she gets here. So the Youth Assessment Center, we formed an agreement with them in 2019. Todd Taylor and I met with the Youth Assessment Center, and we met with the attorneys. We formed a really nice agreement that was okay for all of us. Youth Assessment Center comes in and provides some really wonderful services for us. And so part of that is that we, as a district, we then offer to provide space in our school when the caseworkers come in to meet with students. So the thing I really like about the Youth Assessment Center is that they have case managers. But most importantly, when we refer a student, we have, you know, permission from parents. We have all the signed documents. We have the referral filled out. We send it over to Youth Assessment Center, and they come over and they do an assessment of the student. It's called the YAZI assessment, and they determine what level the student falls within. And that helps them determine what kind of services to provide to the student, which I feel like is a very, you know, strong way to approach this. They have a variety of different services. They can do mental health services. They can do after-school programming, so they can do sort of social programming, but they also can do more in-depth mental health services too. So they offer a wide range, plus the case manager coming in, you know, ongoing, meeting with the students in the schools, touching base. Services typically last from four to six weeks, so they're short-term. They want them to be short-term. And if they assess at the end and determine the students need additional services, they can provide those too. So I don't know, it looks like maybe Lori was unable to make it tonight. But we are bringing, okay, okay. We are bringing forward the agreement. I'm, I'm sure, Jennifer, is that going to be something coming soon to the board members to look at? It is, okay. Okay. Tonight would be the first read, so if you have specific questions about the agreement, we wanted Lori to be able to address those. But Linda can probably address those for you as well. But, I mean, we do, we meet with them ongoing on a regular basis. The high school, the middle school is able to connect with the case managers and with Lori Britt ongoing to find out how things are going for students. Families are involved. So as I see it, a win-win for us, and it's something that I've truly been committed to over my career in the district, is just making those connections for additional services for us in the schools. So, does anyone have any questions about that, or anyone else, Todd or Jennifer?
Yeah, I had a question more not necessarily about the agreement, but just kind of the usability of the program. So this, this has been available to students for some time, so I was just kind of curious, like, what is the usage, how many?
Yeah, I mean, I would prefer Lori address that. She could address it more specifically, but I will say, I've heard her, we've talked about that. So during the time, so we formed the agreement just prior to COVID. So we were getting started, we were familiar with the staff, we were getting to know them. You know, it was looking like it was going to be, you know, a good working relationship. Then COVID happened, and really, they were fully out of the schools during that entire time. So they have, Lori is the new executive director. She has all new staff working for her. So they really are rebuilding, fully rebuilding that program. So as I've talked with Mr. Nance at the high school and his team, I think they're going to be utilizing those services. I met with their support team yesterday to talk about the services, and Lori joined me in that meeting too. So I'm looking forward to some use, and I can, I can report back to you or feel free to contact me to ask questions as we get started.
Yeah, I have no doubt of the need and the, you know, the ability to expand out. I think that's super important. Is there any limitations as far as like how many caseworkers they're providing? I know, I mean, I guess that maybe is more of the, the fears that there's not, there's not enough, or we run against a situation where students need it but aren't able to use it. So I guess,
So what she said, she said to support staff the other night, she said that each of her clinicians or her case managers could take a caseload of 30. So that's 60 students right there. So I felt like that was pretty generous. Now, I know they're going to be meeting with Unit 4 too and providing services over there. But she was just encouraging us that if we felt like students could benefit, we should get them referred as soon as possible. Thank you, those are good, good questions. Brenda?
Hi, Linda, is there a specific age level that you're trying to target with this? Or maybe you might know the youngest who's been referred. How exactly does that work?
Well, so they provide services from 10 to 17-year-olds. So that means we could actually look at some of our fifth-grade classrooms and 10-year-olds. I have not rolled that out to our fifth-grade classrooms as of yet because it's something a little bit new for us. So, but, but it is possible we'll be able to provide services at our elementary buildings, our middle school, and our high school.
My other question is kind of going to piggyback on what I just asked was, do the caseworkers come out or do the students and families go to this place?
I mean, they, they can do both, but we have, that's part of our agreement that we will provide space in our schools for the case manager to meet with a student.
Okay. And is this a, a regular space? You know, like, do they have a set time and date when they come? Or are they just using someone else's space for that time, or?
We will work that out as we go. As students are referred, then Mr. Nance and Mr. Dr. Remelt will be helping me find a space probably as we need it. So we won't, we won't set a specific time until we see what the needs are.
All right.
You, the, the case managers the other day also said that they'd be willing to come into our new studio classes at the high school. You know, they would do some larger group activities. They would talk, mentor students. They would talk about, you know, lots of different topics with, with larger groups of students too. So.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, thanks. Get this to turn on. I just had a quick question too about how this, and you forgive me if you've already explained this when we first signed on. Does, do the services provided by the Yak also wrap around with our own support staff at, say, the middle school and the high school? I mean, do they, are they able to work with the clinicians we have on staff here so that there aren't any gaps in information or treatment or therapy or, you know, any kind of counseling services? They all kind of work together, is that correct? That's really what we're going to talk about tonight. It's something called the multi-tiered systems of support. And so it's an actual framework that we use in our schools, academics and behavior, which really supports students at all different levels. And, you know, looking at data to make determinations who, who works within what services. So if a student is identified at a tier three, which I'll talk a little more about, we might then look to community services to provide, you know, because maybe we've tried things within our buildings. We have wonderful staff who will be the, sort of the first triage. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next administrative report is on social, emotional, mental health, and community layer supports for students, led by several of our administrators, starting with Dr. Nor.
So tonight, this is a topic that, yeah, Linda got us started on this, and we could talk about this for hours and hours and hours. But tonight, you're going to have a quick overview for tiered support or multi-tiered supports for students. And then also universal safety measures. We'll be talking about both of those tonight. So when, when we think about our hopes and dreams for our children in our community, as Linda mentioned, there's many partnerships that we must join together so that we are transforming learning spaces for students, not just within the walls of our schools, but also throughout the community so that our students feel safe and supported. So at the last few board meetings, we've been sharing some of our district goals, and I want to take a look tonight specifically at our district SMART goal. And this is the first goal in our plan that focuses on transforming learning spaces to be safe and supportive for all students. And so the first part of that goal focuses on adult practices, and that all content and grade-level teachers will be teaching and modeling the five castle competencies. And we'll talk more about that. We've referred to those before. But basically, those competencies are students being able to identify their feelings and their emotions and applying that to, to themselves and to others so that they can be successful. So when we look at measuring that, one way that we can do that, and we've talked about Panorama, and that's a survey that will be starting September 30th. And so our goal with that is that 90% of our K through 12 students will demonstrate an increase of 10% social emotional growth as demonstrated through that survey from September to May. So we'll look for improvement. And on that survey, there's questions, you know, how, how students are feeling welcome, and do they have a safe and trusted adult? And do they have go-to individuals? And that's really important that those connections are being made. And then we also include families on this as well. So our families will be taking a survey as well. This is through, So our families will be taking um, a survey as well. This is through Panorama. And then our goal is that we just, that we increase participation so that we get feedback from our families from one survey to the next. So the student is at the heart, the students are at the heart of all of this and it's all components working hand in hand. Our students and particularly um, now more than ever, they deserve structure. They deserve consistency and support at all levels so that they can develop the skills that they need in those five competencies that I mentioned. So it's partnering with families and the community. And that we have a guaranteed viable curriculum and instruction. Whereas I mentioned Panorama, that's K through twelve, we must have that consistency at all levels so that we can have that safe and supportive environment. And so again, I mentioned castle and the five competencies, and so those are self-awareness. And then the skill associated with that is recognizing one's emotions, values, strengths and limitations. Responsible decision-making, making ethical constructive choices about personal and social behavior. Relationship skills, forming positive relations, um, working in teams and effectively dealing with conflict. Social awareness, showing understanding and empathy for others. And self-management, managing emotions and behaviors to achieve one's goals. So these are explicit skills that are being taught, taught to students. And the importance that these skills are interwoven throughout the day. In all courses, all grade levels, all settings, um, that's what's important. And we're really working with our teachers, our educators to provide them the support that they need so that can be carried out fully. So just wanted to share a model of, of where we started and where we are and where we hope to be. So at the district level before SEL integration. We had some inconsistency with our common language goals and curriculum. And that's within departments. After we're integrating adult professional and student learning um, into environments and as well as including consistent goals from our district goals to all of our school improvement plans. And we've also established a district SEL committee. At the school level, we've had inconsistency between one level to the next in regards to SEL curriculum, implementation of resources or the competency-based assessment, which is Panorama that I mentioned. That's why we are going that route. So after we're having school-wide SEL goals that are aligned to our district. Needs and resources assessed, SEL and core instruction and other professional learning. And again, explicit SEL skill instruction. At the classroom level before individual teachers were planning their own SEL competency assessment and practices. Although we've had second step at the elementary for years, we really didn't have a consistent measure at the secondary or to bridge that gap. After, and this is something that we're still working on, is having more engaged students. We'll have the data from these assessments to inform our decision-making so that we can have interventions, increased outcomes and decreased behavior problems so that we have a more positive classroom environment. And now I'm going to turn it over Linda and she's going to further detail multi-tiered system of support.
So I'm going to start off by talking about the multi-tiered system of support. And sometimes you'll hear people referring to it as MTSS, that's the acronym for it. So if I, I'll try to stick with the, not go there with the acronym, but if you hear, if you catch me doing it, it's MTSS refers to multi-tiered systems of support. So this is really how we do business here in the school district, how we educate our kids. Whether we're talking academics or if we are talking um, behavior. So tonight, I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking specifically on behavior. But I am going to talk more about what we're doing on that behavioral side of the MTSS triangle. So as you can see, this is, you know, the, it's a system of support. So what we're doing is we're looking at different ways that we can support our systems, no matter what kind of interventions they need. So we know that there are, we're looking at this triangle here and there's the number one, two and three. And each one of those numbers represents a tier on the triangle and how we're supporting our students. So if we're to look at the number one there, that means tier one. And that is really where if I were to put every student in Urbana Middle School into a try, into a square, a number, it would, they would fit into the number one. They're all going to get that core instruction and supports that our teachers are teaching. So they all get the, the information at all of their, in all of their classrooms. And then as we look, we do teaming, we work in teams to determine if kids are struggling with some of the concepts that they're learning at that tier one. Then we use our teams to determine, looking at data and assessments, determine what additional supports we can provide for our students. Supports, interventions, um, and we'll talk more about what that looks like. And then again, we do the same thing at tier three. So tier two is a more targeted supplemental instruction intervention from what we've done at that tier one level. It's additional reteachings of information, more information, more supplements of instruction. And then we look at the data, how are our kids doing? How are they doing? Some of them may need additional supports. And the top of the tier, the smallest part of the triangle, the tier three is the intensive individualized instruction and interventions. That's more one-on-one work with our students. Um, so typically we say all of our kids fit into tier one. Um, maybe ten, five to ten percent in tier two and under five percent in tier three. Now, I'm not sure what that looks like with COVID. Um, I'm guessing that there are a lot more students that need additional supports right now. And so that's why we're working really hard to try to pull things together, make sure that like what you suggested, Anne, that we're working really diligently to use all of our resources and build on those. So MTSS really helps us support the whole child, whether we're talking academics or behavior. Um, social, emotional learning. And it really helps us to create a safer environment in our school by intervening equitatively across the board with our students. Okay. Let's see, what do I do? Okay, so I'm going to talk just a little bit more about how we do tier one behaviorally in our schools. And um, again, this is really the core instruction. Um, so all buildings in our school district. We do monthly character traits, core competencies and core competencies. So the character traits are respect, responsibility, integrity, cooperation and perseverance. So buildings are using different ways of getting those points about, uh, across about character education. The next thing that we're doing is this is something new this year, we're, we're doing zones of regulation across the board from early childhood up through the high school. And um, zones of regulation are really, uh, it's a method for students to identify their, their feeling and their level of activity. So they kind of determine what's going on with them and how they're feeling at any given time. And then thinking about different ways that they can um, deal with their responses. And finally, um, district-wide, as Kim mentioned, we're going to be doing panorama surveys three times this school year. We're going to do those with students, staff and families. And I hope that they will um, use our SEL, social emotional learning surveys. And I hope this will provide some evidence um, that we are being successful at our SEL instruction and also how we might be able to improve that. Um, so at our elementary school, uh, schools, the materials we use there to teach SEL and tier one instruction are second step curriculum and morning meetings. So every one of our teachers at the elementary school level has a second step kit. And that's pre-K through grade five. And it's a really easy way of teaching SEL, um, very user-friendly. And each teacher has a kit and they also receive a morning meetings book and an activity book. So morning meetings is really helping teachers develop um, community within their classroom. Every day they have a meeting together, they sit down, they can talk about issues, they can talk about positive things. Um, they can work things out and we, the community, so all of our teachers have access to that. At the middle school level, um, they, they are doing a Wednesday SEL session. And during, they use empowering education among other SEL materials during that time. Um, and those are lessons that um, support, you know, our specialists teach to students and our teachers in the area of SEL. And then teachers can take, in the general ed classrooms and content areas can take that information back and sort of embed it within their classrooms. So um, we also, they're doing behavior flip and that's a, a positive way of collecting data and setting expectations at the middle school. And at the high school, they tried something new this year. They're working on a class called Studio. Um, it's a pilot program, so we're finding out what it's like for the students, the freshman and sophomore students at the high school right now. But it's a way that a group of students meets together every day and they're building community in this group. Um, there is a specialist staff person that works with them every day. So they connect with a, a staff person, um, build a support system. They're doing SEL lessons, um, and they're just, you know, it's thirty minutes of time together. Um, and we're, we're going to see how this, this works out at our high school level. This is the first time we've tried something like this.
Ms. Given?
Yes.
About how many um, high school students are, are in the studio? Is it a large group or a small group that meets?
Freshmen and sophomore. Mr. Nance, do you want to?
Sixteen, seventeen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Okay, thank you.
Um, let's see. Okay, so um, the tier one universal safety measures, I think Dr. We Mel is going to speak and about that and then we'll come back to tier two and we'll go back to Linda.
So we intentionally um, put the, the conversation about safety here because um, as a district, we have always been very proud of our SEL effort. I know Linda has championed that and as a building principal was something that was really important to me and, and I think as a district. Um, we can't really talk about the things that our students are not doing well or some of the discipline things without talking about how we're supporting them with their social, emotional and mental health needs. Which is why we've kind of wrapped all this in the uh, multi-tiered system of support conversation tonight. Uh, we can't really look at their academics and the areas that they're uh, struggling without really blending how we're supporting them um, socially and emotionally. And so I'm really proud, I know I, I want to thank Linda too um, for her efforts in working with our social workers. Um, a lot of our clinical professionals, our student engagement advocates. I want to thank the board for putting so many uh, resources in place in our schools. Um, you guys may not know this, but when I go to other meetings and I talk about um, some of the supports that we have, I know when Mr. Nance came here, he thought, oh my gosh, I've never worked in a high school that had this many um, support staff. And I know it is a costly expense to the district, but it is um, so needed, especially coming pre-pandemic, in pandemic, in pandemic and when we are eventually someday soon, post-pandemic. Um, we need every single one of those people and um, if any of them are watching, I know they wear, uh, they walk in really big shoes every day and they wear really big hats. Um, and we thank them for their efforts. We know it is, it's, it's challenging and I'm, I'm going to include our SRSs um, as part of that group and our counselors are part of that group. So it, it really takes every single one of these special people um, to kind of wrap around our students individually, but also um, on teams, uh, in departments, in grade levels. So I just wanted the community to know and the board to know, one, we appreciate the resources. But two, that everybody is working really, really hard um, to help our students relearn expectations. So Linda talked about those um, expectations. We are teaching kids how to do school again, and I call it doing school, right? A lot of our students um, have not had systems for the last fifteen months. They've not had structures, they've not had routines, they've not had adults telling them, no, you can't do this. Or no, you can't do that, or come and sit here, or um, you can't say those things in school. So um, I think we've, yes, there've been some bumps and I know there's some um, people have seen things in the community or heard things, or I've had people call me and say, what happened with this? And that is a reality and I think every school district in the country is, is feeling the same pains that we are feeling. Um, but I think we are trying to be very intentional by putting proactive preventive supports in place first. Before we become punitive and start, uh, you know, really layering on the consequences and really um, pushing students out of our buildings or into spaces where they're not with us. We really want to help them relearn all these things that they've just not had um, available to them in the last few years. So I now, I know a lot of our public that might be watching tonight and I know some of our board members. Uh, we really want to talk about these, how we're addressing some of the safety issues. Um, inside our schools as well as for us, I think one of our biggest concerns are the things that are happening in the community that could possibly come into our school buildings. So at the very beginning of the school year, um, I invited Dr. We Mel and Mr. Nance to be here tonight because we've had multiple conversations about this. So I think the second day of school or the third day of school, we had a collective team secondary meeting. Um, and we invited, our SROs of course are always part of those team conversations. And we invited uh, representatives from Urbana Police to come over and talk with us about what are some of the things that we could do inside our buildings before we get to the point of having to talk about metal detectors and winding students at the door. Um, I know those are things that are being discussed in our neighboring district. And um, I never thought we'd be having those conversations in Urbana. Um, because we've always been more preventive and more, um, it's just not been Urbana way to be talking about being punitive with students. Now, we may get to the point where we need to have that conversation in a more thoughtful, intentional way at the board level. Um, but at the administrative level, what we've been doing is really talking about prevention. And so um, I think some of our initial efforts have been successful. Yes, there've been some um, early uh, physical incidents of physical aggression. And you might call them fights, but we call them something else. Um, those are opportunities for us to kind of reteach students and set expectations. And yes, we have had to give out those discipline um, consequences early on. But we've used them as teachable moments and we're hoping that moving forward, uh, we won't have to do as much of that. So at the middle school level, some of the things that we've been talking about, we've had a couple of meetings. Um, we've brainstormed some things, um, and these are things that we're putting in place. So at the middle school, they've been using scanners, um, the high school is going to be using those as well. So utilizing student IDs to know where students are. As you guys know, we've talked about that a lot. Kids are eating all over this building and at the high school as well. So um, we want to make sure we know where students are, we want to make sure we have adequate supervision at every single lunch location. Um, that, you know, we've got three hundred students per grade level and they have to kind of move all around um, and stay social distance at the same time. So we've been using um, student IDs, the middle school piloted that program. And it's something that the high school is going to uh, try as well. So we know based on the scanners, um, where students are eating and where they're supposed to be. I know that's been challenging supervision-wise and Dr. We Mel, see if you have questions about that. Um, and it takes a lot of time. So I think they're still kind of tweaking how to use the scanners, but initially uh, that was how we're using them. We've posted for additional student relations supervisors. Those are also, I guess traditionally what you would call a hall monitor. Um, we use our student relations supervisors in, you know, more depth, more thoughtful ways. Um, but one of their roles is to supervise, uh, they supervise it and uh, arrival dismissal, hallways. Um, if you come to the middle school, hopefully there will be an adult who, wherever you walk is kind of monitoring uh, your path. And we feel like um, as we look at our spaces um, within both buildings. We feel like there's some spaces where we could have additional eyes and ears. Um, and so we posted for those additional uh, positions, just like the rest of the district in some of these other spaces, we are. We are still hiring in a lot of areas, so we're really hoping that we're able to um, hire additional people and we're outgoing recruiting for that right now. Um, additional radios, so we use a really high-end uh, kind of walkie-talkie radio system. Um, right now, because the middle school and the high school share a campus, so to speak, um, they are able to communicate with one another via radio. Our SROs are able to communicate via radio, um, we're having radios at central office, so we can communicate, uh, we can go to a channel and we can get on and talk to Mr. Nance and Dr. We Mel when we need to. Um, and and radios, it sounds like, you know, kind of trivial thing, but it is not. Um, when we did our uh, soft lockdown, the radios were just, we u- it was just so important to have them. Um, if we ever have situations where we have to do an unification, or we have to um, really be in a crisis situation, um, the more radios we can have, the better. So I think we uh, assessed what was one of our biggest needs and uh, both Dr. We Mel and Mr. Nance felt like they need additional radios to be able to have in the, to be able to give to uh, these new people who we hire, as well as current staff who could be utilizing, um, who could be, you know, kind of being additional eyes and ears with those radios. Increased communication um, between administration staff and the community. We're doing our best to be transparent, um, when there are incidents that happen that we feel the community needs to know about or our parents need to know about. Um, we're just like we had the uh, TikTok um, devious thing, whatever it is, but uh, that, you know, the, that was um, something that, you know, just kind of caught all of us off guard and and was um, just so inappropriate and just something we, you know, we we addressed right away. But we felt like it was important for the Urbana community, the the UMS family to kind of know, this is what happened in case your students come home and talk about it. And we've already had lots of conversations about our school resource officer. You guys heard Mr. Nance talk about his interactions already. In the short time he's been at UHS with uh, Mr. Burnett. But here, Ms. Robinson is an integral part of uh, Joe's uh, school support team and his support, um, the each grade level has a support team. Uh, with some of those specialist people that I talked about earlier, um, and the SRO is an important part, piece of uh, his grade level teams. So I'm gonna go ahead and do the high school slide, and then it has been a long day for both uh, Principal Nance and Dr. We Mel. So after I do this slide, if you have questions that you would like to stop and ask that you feel like I'm not able to answer, um, we'll have them uh, answer those and then they're gonna kind of tip out so they can go, okay? So at the high school, very similar um, conversations, uh, one thing that we are implementing at the high school that is a huge lift. We have been wanting to do this for years and years and years, Mr. Nance doesn't know this, but we've talked about it so many times. Is the expectation will be that students and staff will wear their IDs at all times. So when I go to the high school, I'm gonna get my ID and put it on. Uh, we purchased lanyards for every grade level, uh, we've color-coded the lanyards, so it'll be easy for um, any adult to be able to identify by the lanyard color if a student is a freshman, a sophomore, junior, or senior. Uh, one reason we need to do that is because of off-campus lunch. So uh, right now, you guys know, our juniors and seniors have been able to go off-campus for lunch for years. That's nothing new. But because of COVID, um, and the need to be able to space students out in the commons, our freshmen and our sophomores are going outside, outside of the lunchroom for the very first time. So as I mentioned earlier, a lot of our students are learning how to do school again. So that little bit of freedom of going outside as a fourteen-year-old has been something that the high school is really working hard to kind of supervise and manage. Manage that, we have to do it, um, because we need the additional lunch spacious, so spaces. So what has been difficult is uh, the staff, they don't know the tenth graders because many of them weren't here last year. So we may know their names, but may not know all their faces. And of course, the freshmen are new and they're learning, you know, what it means to be a UHS Tiger. So wearing the student IDs is going to be really important, um, to be able to identify a student, to know who they are right away, know their name, uh, know their grade level. One other benefit to the IDs and the lanyards is we will know immediately if there's somebody in our building that does not belong there. So um, I think one of the things that we worry about um, is outside people coming in who um, who wish to do no good for whatever reason. And lunchtime, um, with all the movement outside, having students in those outside spaces, um, someone from the community could enter those spaces and, you know, we wouldn't know right away, because if it's a kid, it's gonna look like another kid. So having the IDs and the lanyards will quickly identify who belongs in our building, who doesn't, um, with any of the adult supervising. We've talked about securing our doors in a more systemic way, so right now at the high school, students, um, traditionally, they could go out for lunch and then come in at a multiple door, so we've really um, stopped that at a certain point in lunch. They can only enter and exit the door, um, not exit, they can only enter the building from door one. And um, there are additional people there, kind of monitoring students as they come back in from lunch, checking things. They will be checking things like the IDs and the lanyards. Right now, we're still trying to make sure every single student has an ID and that has taken a little time since there are twelve hundred of them, um, almost twelve hundred of them. So uh, securing the doors, one thing, and I'm gonna give Mrs. Morton credit for this, uh, when she was the principal of Danville High School, um, they use these uh, door alarms. So for doors that are not um, typically used, um, we would be able, we are going to um, put an alarm. It's kind of sounds like if you've ever opened the AED machine and there's that loud kind of, or you've opened a door that belongs, that is a really like a fire exit, and you kind of get that loud sound. Um, our student relations supervisor, our administrators will have a key to be able to turn um, turn that alarm off. But what that will do for us is if we have students inside our building who are opening doors to let outside si- outside people in, we will know because of that alarm. So one thing that um, high school students do this is they letting their friends or somebody who's not supposed to be in school. One way they might do that is by sticking a little rock in the door, and you would not even know the door wasn't locked. Um, but this way, we want that, won't be able to happen. They, we will make sure those doors are secure, and then if anybody pushes them and opens them, we'll get that buzzer sound. And an adult will be able to quickly go to the door to assess the situation, to see who's entered into the, into the uh, building who wasn't supposed to be there. We're also adding additional um, student relations supervisors at high school, similar to what I discussed at the middle school, also additional radios. Um, something new for the high school is they have seen the success of some of the ways that the middle school has used the scanners, so they're gonna try that. Um, it will take a little more time, and again, we need the additional supervision. So as the students leave for lunch, they will scan themselves out, and then when they come back in, they'll scan themselves in. So we'll know who has exited the building and when they, when they come back in. Also increasing communication, um, I wanna give Dr. Uh, Mr. Nance a shout out for all of his wonderful messaging that we've seen lately, the newsletters, um, the extra emails. I I know our parents, I I've talked to a lot of parents at events uh, recently, also appreciated. So um, the more we can communicate so our families know what's happening within our buildings as well as in the community is really important. And again, um, the the uh, important presence of our SROs. So I am going to stop there. If uh, there are specific questions for uh, Dr. We Mel or Mr. Nance about some of the safety um, concerns or if there are things that you have questions about in terms of the SEL supports that are happening in the buildings, um, and then the two of them can kind of get ready for tomorrow.
I have a couple of questions. Um, one, I know that there is uh, a lot of areas in both schools. Do you feel like we might need added cameras?
Oh, I was gonna bring that up.
Um, I'm sorry, Jennifer.
Nope, I was gonna bring, I meant to top the dawn and get it.
And that's where Dr. We Mel's in, Mr. Nance's phone, I guess.
So we've talked a lot about cameras, and I don't know, Mr. Nance, if you wanna come on up, you can too. Um, we, I think.
It's a yes for both of us, yeah.
It is a yes.
We need cameras, and some of our cameras are not working all the time, so we need.
Yes, I know there's parts of the school that doesn't have a very good internet, and that's very difficult also.
Well, not internet, we've been doing great with internet, it is coverage with the cameras. So we've been talking with John about, and some of it is just position, placement of where we could move them more strategically to get a better placement, so.
Yeah, and some of the newer cameras that we have at UMS, the three sixty cameras, the way you can rotate it and spin it, and those are really, really nice. Uh, and some of the older ones are more fixed in certain areas or they're, they've gotten blurry over time, and so upgraded cameras would be really important for both buildings.
Absolutely. I meant to, I didn't wanna throw those on the slides without talking to John, and I didn't have a chance to connect them, but yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. The the other question I have is uh, uh, you know, these students that we have, what's gonna happen if they forget their lanyard or lose their lanyard? Will they have to go somewhere specific to get a replacement, or how is that going to work?
Um, right now, we have a sticker system that we're using, so we're hoping that the scanners are gonna provide like digital uh, signage, so they'll take a picture and they'll get a printout with a little picture and to sign in when they sign in with a timestamp as well.
All right, thank you.
And we also, we have the the stickers that we're using are these really big orange stickers.
Yeah, they're, they're real big, so we're hoping that it's provide prevention for students to not lose them, because they're gonna be embarrassed when they're walking in the classroom or the hallways with the big orange stickers, so.
Exactly, so yeah, it will incentivize them not to forget their IDs, yeah.
Well, and I guess the same would go for staff too, because I know it's hard to, you know, everybody has their staff ID, but oftentimes you think, oh, I've worked here twenty years, I don't need my ID, you know. But just a different mindset, I guess, for everyone, to make everyone safer.
Yes, and we'll have to go through some growing pains with some staff members, but I I always, you know, modeled the way, and so if I'm gonna lead by example, and if I'm gonna ask the kids to wear their uh, lanyard and ID every day, I have to do the same. So I, same expectation for the staff.
Other questions?
I was curious, when you're saying um, student IDs for middle school, what does that look like for them not without the lanyards or the hard copy? Like, what what is the ID?
So what we have historically and what we're continuing this year with IDs is, we haven't used lanyards at the middle school, so they typically carry it in their binder, uh, or in their book, whatever bag they're using. And the IDs are in particular, and particularly important for lunch. So when they go through the lunch lines to get food, once the the new IDs are in, right now they have the temporary IDs. They're able to use those IDs to scan for their uh, to get their food, but also then at, for their assigned spots, that's how they're scanning in, and there's a scanner, they just hold it up. So right now, we don't have lanyards, because they're just using their bookbags or their binders is what they've used historically. Some kids have lanyards on their own, but.
The lanyard is more of a high school, the high school thing.
Just, just having a middle schooler, I just was curious about them losing it, or like, what that looked like, because I'm guessing that happens a lot too.
They lose everything, yes. Uh, so where it's been most successful to cut down on losing is when, when they keep it in their binders. Yep, and then they just open those up at lunch. Or remember the other question?
Just quickly, the scanners that you're talking about, are, do we already have them? Is that what you're saying? I mean, I, I, in my mind, when you first started talking, I was thinking like at the door, like when you swipe in a security badge, you know, to get into a building. But what are, exactly, is that what you're talking about, and have we, have we purchased them? Do we have them?
So at the middle school, we do have them, we have six scanners, and we started with those last year in the third quarter when we started having more students coming in person. And then by the fourth quarter, because we had in the fourth quarter, students that were here half-days and students that were here full-days, we wanted to have a better accurate representation of the number of students signing in and out throughout the day, because half the students were leaving halfway through the day. And so they were scanning in in the morning and then scanning out when they left midday. And the way you can set up the scanners is you can generate a, by a formula, that it goes directly to an Excel spreadsheet, and it says the name of the student, because it's correlated to their ID number. And then what door they exited out, at what time, it's all time stamped. And right now for lunch, then we've also created that they're at their correct assigned lunch area. So middle schoolers, especially coming back after all the months off, uh, wanted to go eat lunch wherever they wanted. And so this was a way for us to be able to say, oh, you scanned in, you are actually on Team Hercules, Team Hercules eats down the hall, so you need to go to Team Hercules. Because we didn't know, so many students coming back this year, we didn't know who was supposed to be eating where by their team, just by their face, so the scanners helped with that. It does, the high school's purchasing them now, we were kind of piloting them last year and this year. It does take a long time, because it's literally one by one at each scanner. So when you're funneling in a thousand students, we don't do it in the mornings right now, because it's just too time-consuming. But that's the lunch uh, piece and going off-campus and back on-campus would definitely be appropriate with the scanners, yeah. Any other questions?
So, my tradition, I thought, traditionally, um, it seems like the the prevalence of incidents has been at drop-off, lunch and and pickup. Is that, is that still pretty much the case, where you, where the bulk of security issues are usually around those three times?
Security in terms of just ensuring safe arrival and dismissal, is that what, is that what you mean?
Well, in in terms, I guess, of uh, I guess, reported incidents, but.
Yeah, I think our, at those times where we have less structure, uh, right, during the school day, there's more structure because kids are in class and they're assigned to specific spots. But arrival, dismissal, and lunch is when there's more flexibility in entering and leaving the building. So historically, that's where you would see if there were a fight or if there were something going on, a conflict, that's when it would be a bigger safety issue, because there's more students around and less adults around at that time. Um, so we would have more significant or serious issues at those times. Um, but what we're also seeing this year and what the additional SRSs and radios and w- will help us with is in the hallways and those kind of corners or the exterior doors on the south side of the building where we may not always have adults, where students could come in or out during the day is also something that we wanna share up with this, these additional resources that we're on the screens.
The follow-on question, sorry.
Yeah, I wanna kind of add to what you just asked, so I think it's relevant to mention, and I didn't put it on the slides. Um, but we have had some incident or issues or concerns with um, our high school students dismissed before the middle school. So pre-COVID, um, we had a lot of issues with high school students coming over and hanging out um, at, in front of the middle school or um, by the MTV bus, and there were some um, visible uh, fights at that time. So um, pre-COVID, the year before, we had all kinds of um, expectations. There was a high school administrator coming over and standing at dismissal during the middle school dismissal time. So one of our earliest discussions at the very beginning of the school year in August was making sure that that did not happen again. So um, we right away put some expectations in place, um, we did have some students who wanted to go hang out at the old Comcast area. Um, so we uh, you know, we started sending patrol cars to kind of sit out there, lots of eyes, I think that has improved, right?
Big time, yeah.
Um, the other thing is we work with MTV, because part of the issues that we have right here on Fair Lawn and Vine is a lot of the high school students would kind of get into these back and forth uh, with Joe's staff, because they were like, I'm waiting for the bus, or I'm waiting for my sibling, or waiting for my little brother. So um, now uh, MTV helped work with us in that the high school students are no longer able to access MTV right here at Fair Lawn and Vine. Um, high school students, if they miss the bus on Ray Street, they have to walk to Lincoln, um, which, again, will incentivize them to come outside and uh, make sure they don't miss the bus, that they're not able to um, to access the bus over here, so there's no reason for them to be over here. And I think that has been something that um, has helped a lot, is that we've kept those older students from being on the middle school campus when they're dismissing. Um, so I just wanted to mention that, because that has been a a huge dismissal thing that we've had to work through the last couple of years.
Yeah, that that was actually my follow-on question. This winter, there's been conversations with first student or MTV with the guards, does uh, safety and security on on buses and dropouts and pickups there, because that traditionally also been a, a rough spot, so.
We're still working through some growing pains with MTV in terms of the buses coming on time. Um, we've combined a couple, we're just trying to tweak some different things, we've combined a couple routes to get them there earlier. Um, and we still are trying to find that sweet spot of what's working best, but MTV is.
We're getting closer.
We're getting closer.
Uh, have you had to change any of the start times for the schools due to the bus?
We'd already changed the middle school start time, but that was not because of busing, um, and we, yeah, so I don't know, Joe, if you want to.
Sure, yeah, we uh, started, we changed our. Sure. Yeah, we, uh, started, we changed our, uh, school day by ten minutes this year in comparison to previous years. So we start ten minutes earlier and end ten minutes earlier. And the reason for that was to try to get one more class in before lunch period started. At the middle school level, once lunch time comes, that's typically when student behavior increases is at lunch and after lunch. Um, and so now instead of having only two classes before lunch for sixth grade, uh, they have three full class periods before lunch now to get more instructional time in in the mornings. So that was in-house. We decided we wanted to increase it by ten minutes as long as busing was able to accommodate. And they have, we, we have a little, that, that ten minutes makes a huge difference with transportation. So we've run into some issues with the MTDs and first students getting here at a, like at our current ten minute earlier dismissal. Uh, but a lot, there's, it wasn't just the MTV routes per se, but there's fewer students riding buses this year due to COVID. So there's more cars and traffic around our campuses, uh, which cuts down on the ability of MTV and first student buses to get here. Um, if you've, if you've been here, uh, between three thirty and three forty-five, the la, this school year, you would see, especially the first week, cars were backed up bumper to bumper to Illinois Street. Um, and that's all, it was all parent pickups, which has never been that way before. We have very, a lot fewer students riding the bus than we ever have, um, due to COVID. And so we've adjusted some things. We've encouraged families to come around to different sides, parking over at Comcast, parking a block away. And students walking and things like that have helped. But also there was, um, some construction being done in town. That was preventing MTV buses to get from campus over to us in a timely fashion. That, uh, has been improved and we combined two buses together, um, that has helped. So we did alter the, the schedule, but that was not because of MTV or first student. That was our own internal request.
Interrupt you.
And the high school, um, I would say that, uh, most of our incidents, uh, we're able to get to them because of the flow of information from our SRO to our support team. So even on the weekends, um, off the channel, send a message, say, hey, look, you know, uh, this is what I've heard, um, you know, from a situation that happened in the community. So we're able to quickly communicate through chat on Monday morning, get our team together, find those groups of kids who have had potential ins- incidents in the community and then able to talk to them. Spread them out, you know, check in with them and do all the things we can do. So they know we're aware of the ongoing beefs. And so that's really has been probably, I would say, one of the major, uh, uh, problems I'm happy with, with our school is the response and the prevention. Before we even have a fight. So that's, that's a key for us. And then some of the fights are pre-planned. So we have a couple bathroom incidents. Uh, we heard about it. So we're able to get to it quickly, but it's not really sporadic. We kind of know already. And we have a sense in our, in our environment and community that we need to be on guard. So our staff has stepped up with invisibility. And just really that positive environment. I'm through the hallway. If you come into school, you're gonna hear me in the hallway saying this to you, baby. That's my slogan. And so just making sure that I'm, I'm, I'm visible and present and being that, you know, large, you know, bigger than life personality in the hallway. So that way kids are getting to kids, uh, class fast and they're excited about going to class and coming to school.
I'm glad Mr. Nance mentioned that, because it was on the slide, but I didn't say that, uh, directly. I, I think Officer Robinson and Officer Burnett are a great resource, uh, because they are the eyes and ears of what is happening in the community through, um, just things that happen. Mondays are tough sometimes, um, at the secondary level, because there's so many things that happen over the weekend that we don't know about. Um, and it is, we are so grateful that oftentimes we don't have to walk in on Monday morning. If we caught off guard and blindsided by some major thing that happened in our community. That doesn't happen very often, because, um, especially I think, um, this, uh, Officer Burnett, he texts us on the weekends. So we can kind of, you know, we have a text group where we can get everybody in the group and say, okay, what's our response gonna be on Monday at eight o'clock? And we can have the student interventionist, I forgot to mention them, as another layer of support. We have, we have people ready to meet those kids at the door and say, okay, that might have happened on Saturday night. But today is Monday morning, you're in school and this is what we're doing. And we can take those kids and have individual conversations with them. Um, we, I would not have, I would not be privy to that information in my role, nor as, nor with our administrators. So that liaison role, um, that our SROs play with Urbana Police is, is really, really critical.
Any other question? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you for saying, all right. I'm gonna turn it back over to Linda.
So the one thing that I'd like to point out after that wonderful discussion and hearing all of that, I, I think it was a great example of how our multi-tiered systems work. Um, for one thing, you know, Dr. Weemel talked about, um, sort of different areas within our schools that might be having problems. And so seeing that, the data showing that, you know, a certain point in the school is having a difficult situation and putting in interventions in place of that to prevent it. So he talked about buses, what they're doing in the buses or where they're stationing their staff or whatever. So that's one way in the tier one level that we really look at that data to help us make decisions. And then Mr. Nance talked about going to our community partners, our SRO, talking about what's happened over the weekend and bringing together our supports to really intervene with our students. So that was a perfect example of, of what, um, MTSS in our schools looks like and how we're intervening. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about, um, tier two, which is the targeted supplemental instruction and interventions. And in all of our buildings, we're doing that at some level. Well, um, there's a smaller group of kids that need tier two interventions. We have a variety of different things. I didn't mention all of them. In fact, I mentioned more of our staff and some of what they're doing in our buildings, um, in tier, in a tier two, two targeted in intervention. So we do have something called check in, check out at all of our schools. And that is really where an adult checks in with our students, with students that have been identified at that tier two. And sees how they're doing, um, gives them some positive feedback, connects with them. So that's check in, check out. Otherwise, we have all of these wonderful support staff in our district that we've, are specialists in our district that we've been talking about tonight. We have social workers in all, at all level, early childhood, elementary, middle and high school. Our secondary schools have, um, multiple social workers. Um, they provide direct, um, help with students with IEPs, but then they also do a lot of small group, individual work with our students too. Um, our restorative practice facilitators are here at the middle school. Um, those are focused on equitable and restorative discipline here in the building. How can we restore, once a problem happens? How can we restore the situation? Um, we also have our student interventionists at the high school. Um, those are, you know, they provide leadership direction to the students. They sometimes deal with crisis situations, um, when they happen to. They're kind of the first point of contact with engaging in, with our students. And then finally, our student engagement advocates, and they are dealing with, um, primarily attendance or chronic absenteeism. Um, that is really their focus. The good thing is they all work together in teams to, um, support each other. It's not just one person's job. Everybody really has to work together, pull together. And then finally, um, I was gonna ta, I'm talking, I'll talk about the tier three intensive individualized instruction. So when we see that a student, um, because of, you know, data that we have or it's assessment information, needs very intensive individualized, um, work, help interventions. We have clinical professionals at all levels. That's something new this year. Um, we have had them at the middle school and high school. And this year we have, um, uh, several, we have three, I believe, and they're sharing positions in each of our elementary schools. So those, the clinical professionals are licensed, uh, counselors, licensed social workers. So they can provide, um, some pretty intensive, um, uh, interventions with our students. Um, I will say that across, I'm gonna talk a little bit about our community services. But I will say that it is difficult to hire for these positions. Our community is really struggling hiring, um, you know, mental health clinicians, um, case managers. It is definitely, we have a shortage across the board. And we have struggled here, um, hiring for all of our positions. And I'll talk more about what's happening at some of the, the community agencies too. So if you ever know people that are qualified for these positions, please send them our way. Um, you know, it's an exciting position and I think a good, good position. Um, next, threat assessment. Todd, would you like to talk about that for just a minute?
Yeah, you, you stole my commercial for the clinical professionals. But yes, if, if, if people know of, uh, you know, high quality mental health staff that are looking for a job, we are hiring. We, we would love to talk to you. Uh, but yeah, I wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, threat assessment teams. Uh, the concept of threat assessment is not new to Urbana, but, uh, starting in two thousand nineteen with some changes to school code. The idea that the threat assessment process should be a team-based process, that it should be, uh, kind of an aligned system across the school district is something we've been working on. Uh, COVID gave us a chance, like a lot of things, to kind of reset that process a little bit. But we do have threat assessment teams in all of our buildings. We did some training last spring and over the summer with those teams. Uh, some of the individuals that, that would typically serve on a, a school level threat assessment team are some of the people we've been talking about. Our school psychologists, school social workers, uh, school counselors, um, our clinical professionals, our administrators. And again, the idea behind threat assessment is to determine, uh, if, if a threat is made or a concern comes in to kind of triage and assess that threat, uh, determine the level of threat and then an appropriate intervention plan for that. So that, that's a process. Uh, and I, and again, we provided some training, uh, to our staff on that. So that is something we're kind of rebooting and working on this year. Uh, and I, and so that, that's our, those are, that's our threat assessment team process. Uh, I will also say, and as long as we're talking just a little bit, I'm gonna kick down to the last bullet point and then I'll let you head on to community services there. Uh, part of our tier three intensive, uh, instruction and intervention are our special education, uh, IEP and five oh four plan services. Uh, we do have, uh, special education teams in all schools, uh, that, that work on, on those things. Uh, not all students that have IEPs have socio-emotional learning needs, but for those that do, uh, we do have special education teachers, uh, social workers, um, uh, psychologists and some of our other staff that work on that. Uh, at times for students with, uh, with more significant, uh, behavioral needs, we may be doing functional behavior assessment and intervention planning to have an appropriate plan in, in, in place for that student with disabilities, uh, to help meet their needs in, in socially appropriate ways. Uh, in a like way for our five oh four plans, especially at the middle school, high school level, our counselors are very involved in that in terms of providing appropriate services and supports for students who may need them. So those are integral members of our teams, uh, that we have across the board at that tier three level.
Thank you.
Sure.
Um, and Dr. Iretata mentioned wraparound earlier, and that can fit within our tier three, um, system too. It's like looking at the whole family system and what kind of supports they might need to. Um, and then finally, I just wanted to mention, uh, community services that we have an agreement with, a memorandum with, or that we have just, um, had a longstanding relationship with. So the youth assessment center we talked about tonight, um, that is fifth grade, um, uh, up to seniors and high school. Rosecrans, uh, used to be called, used to be Prairie Center, now it's Rosecrans. They do substance abuse, um, assessments. They would come into our buildings. They would do that if we asked them to or a parent asked them to. Um, and they also do prevention at our elementary schools too. They come in and do prevention type lessons, um, in our after school programs. Um, Hope Springs is a part of Cunningham Children's Home. It's their therapeutic, um, mental health and trauma-based, uh, a, agency. And we have an agreement with them that the board signed several years ago. And, and I'll be bringing that back to you soon. Um, but they also send a clinician to the middle school and they're looking to expand that to the high school. Right now, unfortunately, they don't have, have their person just recently left. So they don't have anyone and they're trying to find someone, but we still have the ability to refer students to their, um, uh, site in Champaign. So, um, and they give our students first priority too, when we make referrals. Um, and finally, I wanted to just mention the Urbana School Based Health Center. We're gonna be, um, talking with them in quarterly meetings coming up soon. They have a new director there. They have, they have had a shortage of mental health staff and since prior to COVID, we even had a mental health clinician at our health clinic. But I found out today that we have, we now have one. Just as of today, we are gonna have a mental health clinician at the School Based Health Clinic on Fridays. And that's really, yeah, that's really convenient for, um, students. You know, they, they walk students over from the middle school that, that have appointments. Um, the high school, they just walk down the stairs. So, um, we're really, you know, proud of those partnerships and work really hard at, you know, maintaining them. So, so that's really what I have to say tonight. And thanks to the whole group here, but if anybody has questions for anyone in the group, please feel free.
For remember, is there any questions?
Thank you very much for the comprehensive overview. I, I'm so glad that, you know, I've been here on the board to see so many of these agreements signed and knowing that they're doing such great work for our kids and COVID resetting everything the way it has. Um, I'm just looking at the graphic at the end of your presentation about the continuous cycle of improvement. And one of the questions I had for everybody tonight was, post, it's tough to measure our successes with, in light of COVID, I know that. But what kind of things are we going to be doing over the coming year to analyze our successes or, or shortcomings? Um, regarding all of the new support staff that we've been trying to bring in. I mean, we, we, we had a big push, what, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then of course COVID hit. But we had always said, and I remember asking, how do we assess ourselves? How do we know that it's working? And, and that the staff we've got are doing what they need to do. And so this graphic kind of reminded me of that. Um, and fitting into that too, with, when we've got so many different programs, this is a second question. You can answer whichever one you want. Um, what is the process behind how we decide which program to go for at which building? Um, I know that, you know, like second step, for example, they, that's elementary school. But we've got something different at the middle school, different at the high school. That's a lot of different languages to learn and a lot of different ways to do assessment. And Kim, I should have been directing this at you too, because this is what you're specializing in. But, um, how do we assess all the different programs? And how do we choose which one is better for this level of education as opposed to the secondary schools? And how do the kids learn to jump from one to the other and the staff and everything? It's a lot of moving parts. So sorry for throwing all those questions.
No, and others can jump in too, but it's been really important and we've been able to see the effects if we don't have structure and consistency for our students from one level to the next. So Linda discussed zones of regulation, for example, and that creates common language for, for all of our students at all levels. And, and that's key. Um, when we talk about SEL and, and having, um, those support structures in place, it's really equipping our staff with the resources that they need and making sure that they have the proper training as well. Um, because the one thing that we're working towards, and it's not perfect yet, that's why this isn't a continuous cycle of improvement. And we continue to look at our district goals, school goals, professional development, um, common language, resources throughout, and continue to refine everything that we're doing. Uh, as a, um, administrative staff and at the central office level, our team really looks at our district goals. And so that we can continue to refine and, um, look at our results and we can model that for all of our schools too, because they have the same goals as well. They just, there may be some other layers of support, but it is really important that there, there are some consistent measures in place with zones of regulation. Um, with panorama. Linda also mentioned the thing that we do at all levels, and that's communicated in newsletters and announcements for our students and families is castle competencies paired up with character traits as well. So again, our students and our families have that common language and that common vocabulary. But we just need to really look at, at all these measures that are in place pertaining to all of our goals. And so when we look at, um, student performance, whether it's academic or social emotional, that we're able to break that down as a quarterly basis across, um, many different areas with attendance, um, grades. You know, there's many different areas that we're gonna be looking at. So all of that, um, how students are doing in that area, those areas will determine if these programs are effective. Whether it's discipline or academics or. those areas will determine if these programs are effective, whether it's discipline or academics or panorama results or math results. There's a lot of pieces and moving parts to look at and monitor. Hope that helped.
Does. I mean, and I had just jotted down a note from earlier in the presentation when, um, it was mentioned that we were trying to aim for 10% growth, measuring from September to May. And I thought, well, what it, 10% of what? I mean, what does that look like? How do we know that we have oozed the needle forward that far? And do these programs that we are, um, taking part in at the different buildings, do they also provide their own assessment? Tools for our staff to use to know that they're doing what they need to do and that the students are showing improvement across all the levels? Um, that's, you know, that it's tough when, like I said, there's so many moving parts to it, but you know, we have to be able to be objective or, you know, collect data.
One challenge for us is we don't have any, since we're math for math and literacy is brand new and, and pan- panorama is brand new for social emotional competencies. Is we don't have that trend data. So once we get that back and, um, how we communicate to our, our leaders as well, is these are working documents. And so once that data comes in, I mean, we will need to take a hard look at that and determine our, you know, are our goals realistic, you know, are those? Um, because we'll, we'll have to just really focus on that once we see, because we don't know yet, you know, exactly what that's going to look like until we see the results, those initial baseline results.
Kim, do you want to talk about what?
I'm glad you mentioned that. So yeah, there's just, there's a lot of layers, um, a lot of checks and balances. Everything can't always be quantifiable data. We also need, you know, qualitative data as well. But, and, and so looking at the classroom environment, the school environment is really important. So we also have a consistent SEL walkthrough measure that's in place. And so that'll provide feedback, um, uh, for teachers, but then overall for a whole building climate to see if there's some things that we need to provide more support for our teachers. You know, whether it's, um, SCLPD or whether they need more resources, um, how students are responding. So that's another piece. I'm glad you mentioned that Linda, just because that's something else that we look at as, as, to see the whole picture.
You know, it, it has been challenging with all of these new positions and then we went into COVID. And so it has been a learning experience all the way. Um, and I will say that we just have to always continue to strengthen our teams and the way we're communicating with each other. Um, we have also learned to really, how to meet with our staff in a different way. Um, today I had a meeting with Shawna Shear and all the SEAs. Tomorrow I have one with the second, secondary. Um, the other day Todd and I had a meeting with the clinical professionals. So we're giving them multiple, um, ways to connect with us. That helps us know what, what they need, where they're struggling. We've been able to improve a lot of conditions for them just by our meetings and then they're supervised, um, and evaluated by the people in their buildings too. So we have multiple layers right now trying to really improve on how we're connecting and communicating.
And Anne, I was going to add too, I'm glad you brought up data. I saw Brian kind of going up because he's a data guy too. But, um, I, I think we're all going to have to just realize the impact of COVID on our data. As Ken mentioned, we have a lot of new, um, new things that we're implementing, new initiatives that are going to be like our baseline data. So we won't have anything to compare, we won't be able to compare apples and apples for quite a while. Um, well, at least for a couple of years to be able to really set some great growth points with things like math and panorama and, and some of these new initiatives. We'll see it evidenced in our school report card too. Um, we won't have, uh, as just like last year, our school report card had impacted by COVID. Um, there are going to be a lot of areas like attendance and, and discipline and, um, some of those areas on our school report card that will still be impacted by COVID. Even our, um, standardized data, you know, we had a lot of students who didn't come in and take the access test and because they had to come in and take it in person. So I think, um, and, um, IER and, and some of these other testing measures that have always been that, that, uh, quantifiable data where we use to measure ourselves. So I think we are, um, going to have to just kind of realize that and, and that's why our district goals and our school improvement goals are so important. Because those are kind of the measures that we have right now, since we are going to have some gaps and holes in our data, um, for the next, well, moving forward, we'll have new data, but we do kind of, we can't compare that. We'll be comparing apples and oranges for a little bit, if that makes sense.
While we're on data, um, I have actually a couple of questions. Anne asked one of them, which is this, the 10% emotional growth, which I was trying to figure out what that meant. And I wonder if instead you can tell us a little bit about, what does a panorama survey? I tried to find them, but there's a lot of paywalls associated with actually looking at them. What does a panorama survey look like? So we can get a sense of what 10% growth would actually mean on a survey? And are the surveys, because since they're K through 12, are they adjusted? So that, I mean, I'm trying to think of a kindergartner filling out a survey. I mean, that's a, that's a tricky animal. So are they adjusted to be age appropriate and sort of grow over time where we would expect higher levels of social, social emotional development? Or is this a static survey?
Yeah, um, I'm glad you asked that. So for K12, that is teacher perception, because a kindergarten, first grade student wouldn't be able to break those questions down, respond in that way. So K12, we provide some time for teachers. So that those, those are teacher perception at that level.
Gotcha. Um, a couple more questions if you indulge me. The other, um, the 3% growth in family surveys, I'm wondering what types of activities you, the district will engage in? That, I mean, that's a huge goal. Um, as a person who does surveys, getting people to participate is really tricky. And if you want 3% gain each time, I think that's very ambitious. Any ideas about how we can achieve that?
That's, yeah, thank you. And so again, maybe our goals are overly ambitious because we don't have the baseline data that I mentioned, but we'd rather strive high than low. Um, but we have noticed from the pandemic and even from some of our surveys, we've had a greater response than we typically do. And part of the reason is we can engage our families in different ways. When we can have a mix of in-person and virtual or just virtual, uh, when we can provide other modes for reaching our families, um, with marketing, that helps, you know, Catherine's been a huge help. So those are all different ways that, um, we can promote those surveys to hopefully get the results that we intend. But I think also helping our families understand the why we're asking and why this is important. And so we have to be really intentional about communicating that too, so that, that they'll hopefully want to give, give us feedback.
Awesome. One last question, um, which is who will have access to the data? Um, and how are you going to disseminate that? So, uh, you know, people can learn from it.
So we are, um, in the process of getting a, a data dashboard that we're really excited about. So it's, we're, we're in the process. This is another new initiative for us. So previously, uh, a lot of the data that we were getting, it was a little Mickey Mouse and, you know, we would create our own Excel documents and, but it didn't have all the bells and whistles. We would have to manually create a lot of the things for charts and graphs. So with Five Labs, it will, um, a lot of this will, it, we will be able to incorporate it into. So our attendance, freshman on track, math data, panorama will all be imported into that so that we can break it down further. So we do have a few users with that. It's, um, John Gutzmer, uh, myself. Um, Tanya Deacon has been wonderful because she's kept the pressure. We've all been very busy and had a lot of different things on our plate. And we've told Tanya, keep this moving, keep pushing, we need this. And so she's been instrumental as well. Um, let's see, Christina Lewandowski, I'm trying to think, but those are some of the individuals. Don't I miss anybody else? Okay. Yeah. So we'll all be taking a look at that and then, um, as users, but then we'll be able to create these reports.
That can be shared with teachers in the building, the administrators.
Yes, absolutely. Right. You bet. And then, and then some of those within itself, you can still, you know, math will have reports for parents and, but we can break it down further and see, break it and connect it to a lot of different areas rather than looking at things in isolation by incorporating Five Labs.
And this dashboard is going to be so instrumental moving forward with some of our equity work, um, in terms of our equity implementation plan. Um, when we get ready to do our equity assessment audit, because we're uploading all the data, we're kind of store housing it in this warehouse. So we need to manipulate it and, um, pull information to set goals even for strategic planning, you know, in the, in the future months to come. Um, this is going to be a, a great resource for us. And like Kim said, we've been building these things on our own and, um, it is, it is nice to have a team to help us kind of have this data warehouse, uh, where all this information is stored. And again, it'll help us kind of build that future comparison in, in future years to be able to have multi-years of data that we can go back to.
Any other questions?
I, I'll throw one, like the last. Uh, one of the greatest kind of criticisms that I heard, I guess both from staff and the public when we were initially talking about expanding these multi-tier support was that we were focusing far too much on the high school and middle school. And that the elementaries were probably where we would get more bang for our buck with regards to adding social workers and additional support. So it, it, I really liked seeing the comprehensive plan here and, and, and then hearing much more about the elementaries. But I was wondering if you've heard that feedback yourselves and if it's been improving in recent years.
I mean, I feel like we have improved. Um, we now have clinical professionals at the elementary building. We have student engagement advocates at each of our schools. We have social workers. We have social work interns. We have psychologists. We have our, um, liaisons, family liaisons. Um, so we have pretty full teams and I like what's happening there. And I have to say that the, the elementary schools, because they have fewer staff, they use their staff very well and they do teaming really, really well. Um, so I think now with these additional supports with the assistant principals and, you know, I mean, we are well-staffed at our elementary schools too. I have not heard that feedback for maybe, you know, a year or two prior to COVID. So, yes, yes. And we, we have made adjustments. So I, you know, I'd be curious to see, hear if you've heard that.
Not recently. Yeah. So it, it, you know, probably going back three or four years.
Yeah. So I, I think it's better, I, you know, come, come to one of the elementaries with me sometime and we'll go check out what's going on there. But I feel like they have a lot of, you know, a lot of support.
I did have one last question. I just wanted to make, make sure Riles had a chance to speak first. Um, again, in light of, um, because SROs were mentioned, I wanted to do, uh, due diligence now that we've already started a new school year. Um, that this, the end of this school year is when the contract for SROs is supposed to be up for renewal. And one of the things that I remember we discussed when we were first signing the contract, and one of the questions I asked in particular was, um, that we not make any measures to renewing any contracts until we've done our own assessment on their performance as well. Since we're doing assessments on all of our other SEL performances or trying to at least since COVID hit, um, I don't know what form that assessment will take. I'm hoping that we have people in the administration of the community to make recommendations about, um, data-driven and objective, uh, measures, tools that are out there to know beyond just anecdotal evidence, how an SRO performs in a school district, in our school district. Because every district is different, even across Wright Street, how the SROs are used or not used or whatever is completely different from how we do. And I want us to be extremely thorough and I want to take as long as we absolutely need to. I mean, up until pretty much now, it was really never an appropriate time to analyze it because we were in lockdown and we didn't have the same sorts of um, issues that we did when we first signed the agreement. But I just want to, I want to put it out there. I don't want to start a huge debate now, but it's now's the time to, for all of us to start thinking about it and talking about it because it is a big time commitment and a big financial commitment. And I want us to do our homework so that we can land on a decision that is best for the district, regardless of where it lands. And we've done our homework and say, we didn't do a rush job on this. We didn't, you know, just rush it so that we can come to a conclusion that we want to come to. We're going to be open about whatever conclusions we've reached. So I don't have the answers to what that tool might look like. I'm hoping that other people have recommendations and we can talk about it in many more open sessions.
And we don't have that tool either because, um, we're going to rely on our SRO advisory board to really help us generate that. Um, we want to have more voices than just ours at the table to have that conversation. Our administrators who will hear this evening, um, staff at both buildings, uh, student voices, of course, parents. Um, so that is where that conversation, I, you know, I'm not going to sit and create a tool that is not going to be meaningful to anybody except the board and administration. So we want something, um, from the people who are in the buildings every day to help us create that tool. So yes, it's on our radar. Mr. Nance and I have already talked about, uh, the advisory board and we're, uh, trying to go out and do some active recruiting. Um, to have, everybody is so stretched with all the initiatives and all the meetings and things that we have going on. Um, so to get people to commit to one more activity, uh, we're going to do a lot of baby and pleading. Um, but yes, that is definitely something we're starting right away. And, uh, we're also starting conversations about, um, the student, uh, the student board representative. So that's another group that Mr. Nance and I worked on, uh, for the high school and, and what that process is going to look like, um, in the next couple of weeks.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
And just one other thing, I just encourage you to visit as well and see that interaction. I, I wish I would have had a video or pictures of this last Friday at dismissal at the high school. Um, when a young man approached Officer Burnett and, you know, he couldn't find his ID and he felt very comfortable. I was standing right there talking to him and, you know, what do I need to do? And to get on the mass transit since he didn't have his ID, he didn't have any money. And Officer Burnett, um, got out his wallet and gave the kid a dollar so he could, you know, get home. But it was just that interaction and, and seeing the student that, that knows he's, again, a safe and trusted adult that he can connect with. So it's just something to see and I thought that was pretty spectacular. I had to do that shout out.
Thank you. I do plan on coming in a lot more now that the schools are open and we're all feeling, we're com- we're coming in. Thanks.
Any other questions? All right. That closes our administrative reports. Thank you all. Moving on to our consent action items, um, 11 dot one are the minutes from our August 17th business meeting, August 31st special meeting, September 7th study session and September 9th special meeting. Uh, well, that two are bills and checks for Ed Fund for approximately $1 million. Operations and maintenance fund bills for $50,000, bond and interest fund bills for $700,000. Transportation fund bills for $100,000, working cash bonds for $345,000. Tort for $565,000, payroll and benefits for 3.5 million. And Urbana Education from June to September for 236. And Urbana adult education from June to September for $236,000. Um, the 11 dot three was a list of personnel items, including four fairly major retirement announcements, um, for longtime members of the district. Um, 11 dot four were administrative personnel items. Um, 11 dot five is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of property in accordance with Illinois state law. And, uh, 11 dot six is a new activity account for the UHS class of 2025. Would anyone wish to remove any of these particular action items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Oh, wow. Second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Hassanadke?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Axum?
Yes.
And President Pulaski?
Yes. Uh, our individual action items are starting off with gifts. Uh, there are, uh, Ronics donated $7,500 to the UHS baseball program and $7,500 to the UHS football program, a $15,000 donation. These funds are to be used to purchase equipment for both programs. Mike Madigan from Hickory River Smokehouse donated $600 to go towards UHS girls tennis to purchase team uniforms. And forgive me if I don't pronounce your name right, but, uh, Warapot Tang Moon Run Kit, uh, from Siam Terrace Thai Cuisine, uh, donated $300 and Jeff Unger donated $250 to go toward UHS girls tennis to purchase equipment. The following donated school supplies to Wiley Elementary School, uh, Friendship Lutheran Church for $200 and Coral Hospital for $250. Peggy Buck donated $122.41 worth of books and art supplies to Urbana Adult Education Center. Is there a motion to accept the gifts?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? 12 dot two is, uh, fiscal year 22 Urbana School District and Adult Education Budget Resolution. Is there a motion to accept the, uh, the budget that was presented last meeting?
A move that we accept the budget that's presented?
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Did I just call him John?
Sorry.
Yes, I had some.
Oh, go ahead, Carol.
I just called you John, I'm sorry.
That's fine. I'll take that as a compliment.
I just wanted to provide a little bit of information, um, for the board this evening. Um, at the last meeting, we did have the study session on the budget on September 7th. But tonight, I wanted to, I told you I would provide you fund balances, um, but I didn't have last time because the, the audit is still in process, but at least we have a little better idea. So I did add and have at your place, um, the sheet with the blue colors on, that shows the budget of revenues and expenditures like it was last time, but I've added the projected fund balance, a beginning, and then a projected fund balance as of June 30, 22, at the end of the budget year. Um, just wanted to kind of go over that real quick. Uh, like I said, the audit is still in process. Um, that will be presented at October meeting, hopefully. So, um, you'll be hearing more about that at that time. But, um, the balances, the, the fund balance is basically similar to your checking account balance at your home. It's the amount that you have in your cash account at one point in time, which at this, for us, it's June 30th of 2021. So that kind of shows you what our carryover balance is. And it increases or decreases basically, um, as depending on if our revenues come in higher than what we expect, it'll cause our fund balance to go up. Or if our expenditures are less, our fund balance would go up. Um, and that's kind of what happened this past year as you, Paul, we did, uh, we're very conservative in budgeting for FY 20, I'm sorry, FY 21. And because of COVID, uh, we had budgeted our revenues to be down quite a bit. Um, and they ended up being better than what we expected, which is always a good thing. So the fund balance, um, at June 30, 21, was actually about $3.5 million higher than what we had projected. So that's good. Um, so I wanted to point that out. Um, and the other, uh, large balance is in our construction working cash bond fund, Fund 60. The only change I made in expenditures from September 7th, when you saw this last, was I added $1 million to the Fund 60 expenses, um, for the working cash technology budget. Um, that $3 million enrolling working cash that we do every three years, $1 million of that is for technology. And even though we haven't decided what we're doing with the other $2 million, because we may be using that for Thomas Paine potentially, depending on how the bids come in. Um, I wanted to make sure we at least budgeted that $1 million there for technology because we might have to start spending that this year. And it wasn't just to get the total budget over the $100 million mark, but that's what it did. So we've actually reached a threshold. We are over $100 million in our budget this year, so. Um, any other questions? Those were the main change, that was the only change I made. And I just wanted to point out the fund balances that we did add. And this is all cash basis, which is going to be different than the audit that you'll hear about in a few weeks. The audit is on a modified accrual basis, so the balances will look somewhat different. But, um, we can talk more about that when the audit is presented. But that's something you're always going to see. We always present our, our records on the cash basis, which is just basically whatever cash we get in by June 30th is counted. If it comes in the day after June 30th, it goes into the next year. So it's always based on whatever cash and expenditures are made on that day is counted in that fiscal year. So with the audit, they push things into one year or another based on when the services are actually performed or when the services were received. So, um, ours is strictly cash basis for our budget. That was the only things I wanted to change and point out to you. So if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them now, otherwise the board, I think you already voted.
Not quite, but any questions?
Any questions?
All right, roll call, please.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Hassanadke?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Axum?
Yes.
And President Pulaski?
Yes, uh, motion passes. Now, uh, board members, the, the budget is the one thing that every board member, when it passes, has to sign the resolution for, and there's a copy of it over near, I guess it's going around, but, uh, for those of you who voted yes or no, you write what you voted. Uh, thank you very much. That closes our action items. There are, there's no call for, uh, future special executive meetings right now, so it's a superintendent's report.
So, uh, going first, um, we should why. Well, uh, with our 11th school year, we, we, we are going to do a little bit of that. I know we are doing a lot of our meetings in person, but the family forum has been one of those spaces that, um, Zoom has been a part of it. Um, so I'll repeat, we, we are staying with a Zoom format for our family forum this year. Um, Dion Webster, our director of, uh, family engagement, um, has, leads those, uh, events. And, um, she's just, she was just so overwhelmed with the, a number of parents who were able to participate for the first time, um, because those were Zoomed. So we decided to keep it that way. Um, the family forum provides, uh, this first one will provide an opportunity for new families and continuing families to learn more about the district goals for the year. So, uh, I just wanted to give a reminder to the board. Um, I've also communicated with, uh, our UEA, our association leadership. Um, in an effort to continue our commitment to communication, the Board of Education and the UEA will participate in our first roundtable discussion of the year. So we're excited about that. Um, we've not done this since, Lori and I went looking for old agendas since 2011, when Dr. Williams was superintendent. Um, typically, um, just for our new board members, uh, we do something, uh, we, we have a lot more engagement opportunities with the UEA when we're, uh, working on our contract negotiations. So, uh, my first year in 2019, we went around and did our UEA board luncheons. Um, those were just so wonderful. It's, it's a great, uh, we're not doing those this year. Um, because of, uh, COVID and the way, you know, everyone is kind of spread out during lunch, it'll be a little, it'll be a lot more difficult to do that. But what that looks like is, uh, we, two board members, we have a schedule, board members go out, we get to sit and have lunch, multiple lunch periods with our staff. Um, and it, it is a great opportunity. They know we're coming, they kind of prepare questions. Um, but since we're not able to do that this year and we won't probably do that again until we, uh, are ready to negotiate our next contract, I really wanted to keep those open lines of communication with the UEA open. Um, so we're, uh, reinstituting the roundtable. It's part of our, uh, our CBA, our agreement with the union. And we, it's just not been done in many, many years, as I mentioned. So we'll meet three times this year. You guys all already have the dates. Um, and the way this works, we notice the meeting. So it is actually a noticed, uh, board meeting and we sit in a space with our, uh, administration and, uh, UEA leaders and we just discuss topics. So if you have, um, some topics that you'd like to discuss, I mean, in years past, we've talked about integrating technology as part of the curriculum, I think was one of the previous, um, topics. And so if there's some burning ideas that you have, uh, get those to, uh, President Pulaski or myself. Um, and we'll kind of spread them out throughout the courses of the year. And UDA, of course, will bring some topics to the table as well. So, uh, we're looking forward to that. Homecoming, um, I know we're not having a traditional homecoming game on Friday night under the lights, but we still wanted to make sure that we were having opportunities for our students to celebrate, uh, their school spirit. And, um, so we've had some meetings at the high school and all of the schools, uh, class sponsors really still want to have Spirit Week. Um, we're calling it Spirit Week and, uh, we're still going to have the opportunity for the students to have a pep rally. It'll be outdoors. Um, we will, it'll be a fall sports highlight. So at the complex, we'll highlight all of the fall sports that are currently, um, happening, like soccer, volleyball, um, JV football, and we'll, uh, recognize the athletes and, and, um, how their seasons are going. We won't have a parade this year, um, but we will still have a, uh, we're not calling it a homecoming dance. It'll be a fall dance. And it also will be outside. Um, there are a lot of districts in that area that are having outside dances. I know Uni4 canceled at both of their schools, but we feel like our students are dealing with so much right now. We really want them to have the opportunity to still get together and, um, just celebrate and do something fun. So as part of the, uh, dance opportunity, students will be asked to bring a negative COVID test. We're going to provide testing for the kids, um, on Friday during their lunchtimes. And then Saturday afternoon, we'll have some of our, um, testing professionals available and, uh, we'll test students, uh, prior to the dance. Walk and roll to school day. So anybody who's been part of our district knows that this is something we always look forward to. Um, this is a great event for us this year because it traditionally also happens outside. Um, so Wednesday, October 6th, uh, we have already started kind of promoting our walkers and bike riders, um, and all of our students and families to walk to school. Um, the goal of the event is to promote physical activity, to help, uh, teach the students about walkability, you know, what they should be, um, looking for when they're walking to school. And of course, safe routes to school and the safety things. Um, we do have some checklists that we ask families who walk to complete. Um, and we've always had a great relationship with the Safe Routes to School Network. Um, we've been working with them since 2004. So we're looking forward to Walk to School Day on October 6th. Sunday afternoon, we celebrated Hispanic Heritage Month, which, uh, kicked off September 15th and goes through October 15th. So we had our district event. I know that some of the schools are having their own individual events, but the district event, um, was held Sunday afternoon here at UMS. We had great participation. Um, there was dancing, singing, games. Uh, it was just a really lively celebration. Um, it was wonderful to see so many of our Kunko Ball families come out. Uh, that was the first time I've seen so many, um, join the Hispanic Heritage, uh, events and celebrations. So it was a great afternoon. It was a little warm, but everyone had a great time. So we utilized all the outside spaces, uh, the grassy areas. So it was a, it was a great group. So I want to, uh, thank the multilingual department, program department, and, um, all of our parent liaisons who helped organize that. UHS soccer. Whoops. There it goes. Our UHS soccer team, this is a fantastic group of kids. Some of these, uh, you know, boys have been around since kindergarten. There's a couple of them, one of them, I had a king. They're just phenomenal. Um, they're off to a great start. They've already won their first eight games and they are, um, they've been ranked in the state. They're ranked first right now, but they also made a national, uh, ranking, uh, a, a week or two ago. So hopefully, John told me they were, did they win tonight? John told me they were down two. Did, oh, it was a tie. At least it's not a loss. Okay. So they were playing Central tonight, so, uh, that is always a crosstown rivalry. But we wish them the best. It's been great going out and watching their games. Um, they bring a lot of energy to the sport and they're a fat, fantastic group of young men. So we're really excited about this season. UMS softball. So our UMS, uh, girl softball team plays second at regionals this week. It's the first time in UMS softball history. So they are so proud of themselves, as you can see from this photo. Their coach, uh, Billy Harmon is in there. Um, this is another group of girls who, they've just been working so hard all summer. Um, so we're really excited about their efforts and wish, uh, and just congratulate them. And, um, this week, we are connecting our mentors with their mentees. Uh, so this was, uh, yesterday. We brought back the freshmen and the sophomores, um, to connect with their mentors. So I do need to share with the district, I don't, with the board. Um, a lot of us have shared this, but you guys may not have heard, that, uh, Tom Howley, our director of, um, mentor and volunteer programs, has recently resigned. Um, we're really sad about that. Uh, however, um, Tom is going to be relocating to his home state of Minnesota. Um, so we wish him all the best. He has, uh, kept the longstanding tradition in our district for CE1 to 1 and growing the program and the volunteer programs. Um, so he's leading us in a really good place. Um, and we're, we wish him the best of luck. So we started connecting our, um, this is a few of the high school students. And then on Thursday, we will be connecting juniors and seniors. So it's just really nice. I was there watching them. Some, some of the mentors had not in person seen their students in a very long time. So, you know, last year, um, even with my mentee, a lot of it was just a, a texting or phone calls. I know some mentors were Zooming, um, and just not having opportunities to, uh, be face to face. So we, this is just a couple of the pictures that you can see, but it was, it was just a, a nice opportunity to see so many smiling faces. So we'll do that again on Thursday for the, um, juniors and seniors. And that is it. I do have a few FOIA's also. Um, Urbana Park District, all of course, respondents from Joseph Schmidt to the USC 116 Board of Education between May 1st and August 17th, 2021. Eagle III Analytics, transcripts, 1935 bond issues. Steep Steel LLC, copies of all active leases, licenses for cell towers, rooftop antennas, other wireless installations on property owned or managed by Urbana School District along the 24 months of associated payment histories. And Eagle III Analytics, complete copy of the minutes book for the meetings held during the fiscal years 1934, 1935, 1936, and 1937. I am very proud to say that all of these were fulfilled and they were shocked that we were able to fulfill them. So I have to give Lori the credit for that and all of our good record keeping, that we were able to pull documents from 1934 and share that with someone. There you go. That is great.
All right, uh, board reports?
I have one.
You can go.
Go, Brian. Oh, mine will be real quick, since we were giving kudos to, to sports teams. Um, the UM, the, uh, UMS cross-country team, uh, to about two weeks ago, went down to Paris and took first place boys and first place girls. Um, so those plaques are up in the front of the building and they were so proud of themselves. So that was really awesome.
That's amazing.
Yes. I left.
I, I just wanted to remind everybody, um, we have an Align A Division Dinner coming up in Atwood, Illinois. And if you've never been to one of the division dinners, they're very good. Um, you can gain a lot of really good information um from the people who are in charge of the IASB. And they also give us updates on things happening in the Capitol too, but they have breakout sessions that you're able to go to to learn more about what's going on. So. And I believe that's the first Thursday in October. I can't remember the date, the seventh. Thank you, Anne. October seventh.
Um, thank you. Um, anybody else? Then I will give mine real quick. Uh, so please check your emails. Laurie sent out a whole list of potential dates for uh IASB uh board retreat slash self-evaluation workshop that we conduct with Perry Hill. So we have a list of his availability in one day, September, and several days in October. Oh, you only sent it to me. Sorry, I need to read my, my, my to list. Okay, well, well, yeah, well, please send it out, but it's, it's uh September twenty-eighth to Tuesday and a list of about nine potential dates in October. Um, so what we want you to do is to return back your, your top three choices. And then maybe some absolute, I can't make this dates so that we can, we can uh pick the best date that to, as many of us as possible is. Because it's only really gonna do us good if we can get everybody there. Um, I also have the committee assignments done. So I didn't, I think most of you got at least something that you asked for. I got, there, there were a few uh committees where, where more than two people asked to join, so I had to make some tough decisions. But um, I have it here if you, or I can read it out if you want to, but um, the meeting's gone on pretty long. So I'll just hand it out to you afterwards. Um, that's it for me. So uh, that's it. So entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, we forgot to mention the theater variety show this Friday.
Oh.
Yeah. And then, mhm, and then the Tiger Marching Band won second place in their class last week at the Montecello Pupit.
That's awesome. All right. All right. So now the motion to adjourn would be welcome.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.